We started at six o'clock, went to executive session to discuss pending and current litigation. Just came out of that, took a couple minute break. And ready to resume our nightly agenda here. So. So our second, uh, second is a review of the draft and police reform and reinvention plan. Kathleen, if you'd like to.
Yep, I'm here. Um, so. Modifications were made based on feedback from, thank you, feedback from trustees. I highlighted them in the document. That I sent around. There are no changes in the. Appendices other than Jeff. Helping with some formatting issues, but the, the, the content is all the same. Are people comfortable with the modifications that were made?
I'm good. I'm fine.
Marie, Marie's eagle eye caught a number of things that were helpful. And then Jeff prepared a resolution. Do we want to read that? Do you want to read that in the record?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Resolution number zero seven dash twenty twenty one adoption of plan for police reform and reinvention. Whereas on June twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Cuomo issued executive order two oh three. Requiring each local government in the state of New York to adopt the policing reform plan for April, by April first, two thousand twenty one. And whereas executive order two or three identified specific step, each local government must undertake in the review of existing policies and procedures, including. Several bullet points here. The first one, comprehensive review of current police reform deployment strategies, policies, procedure and practices. The plan, uh, second bullet point, excuse me, development of a plan to improve such deployment strategies, policies, procedures and practices. Third bullet point can consultation with local stakeholders regarding the plan. And fourth bullet point, offering a draft of plan for public comment to all citizens in the locality and consideration of submitted comments. And whereas the village of Coltsring has either completed or developed the schedule for the completion of all the steps identified executive order two oh three. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village board approves the plan as presented. And resolved that the mayor is authorized to sign the required certification. And resolve that the village clerk is hereby instructed to submit the. Approved plan to the director of the New York State Division of the Budget before April first, two thousand twenty one. And it's a roll call vote.
Um, no one has made a motion or seconded it yet.
I will make a motion to, uh. I guess, uh. Adopt the, uh, the plan, uh, for police reform and reinvention, resolution oh seven, two thousand twenty one.
Second.
Okay, on a roll call trustee early. Trustee Bender.
You're muted Heidi.
You're on mute. Sorry, apologies. Uh, no.
No, uh, trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Miranda.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Resolution is officially adopted on a four. Uh, on, uh, what I guess that's the date, uh, or no, what is that adopted on?
Today, three, three twenty three.
Three twenty.
Twenty three, twenty one.
By the vote of four to one. I was confusing what they wanted there because I saw the date underneath there. So I'm not sure why we, but okay. All right, um, and then I, the next is, uh. Appendix B or no, that's, that's part of this or is that the certification? Is that part of the plan? That we just approved.
This has to be signed by you. We have to just, um. This is the certification.
Yeah, there's, there's the, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing it online, but. This, this, that Jeff checked.
Yes.
Wrote in by hand and then another page is your signature page.
Yes.
But we just approved that the appendix is part of that approval. Okay.
Yes.
All right.
So do we, do we need another motion to authorize you to sign that?
I think we did that in the.
Part of the resolution.
Part of the resolution.
Good to go.
Resolved that the mayor has authorized the sign. So. Okay, thank you, everybody. And thank you for your work on that Kathleen.
Okay, and Larry, thank you so much for all the work.
Okay, um, next up, I believe is the recreation. Let's see, is that right? Like, I gotta keep this. Review of, uh, Tots Park reopening plan. And I saw Ruth Ann on board, so.
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we've met and you can see from the. The submission, uh, the recreation commission sent. That we're well along in the preparation for opening. Most of the tot park has been physically leaves. Broken toys, over toys, too many toys have already been removed. Some of the things that still have to be done are the signage. And agreement to have a sanitation station. And how long that will take to be up and running. Heidi has submitted. A draft of what the sign. Would look like. I don't know if you have that in front of you.
Sorry, Ruth Ann, I only sent that to you this afternoon. It is the same text that's in the, um. Version three that's included here in the, in the notes. I just put it all together.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, so, and sorry, I did reach out to Gray and printing costs for that, for something that would hold up outdoors would be approximately thirty dollars.
Okay, so then. That says that we're going to supply, maybe the top bar committee or someone is going to supply, um, hand sanitizer and wipes. And the station has to be set up. And we need an opening date. I mean, a date for all of that to be completed and then an opening date approved by the trustees.
We can get the hand sanitizer from the, through the county, right? Through BES, they have the state supplies?
Yeah, so I think we might have to go directly through the state now, the last time I checked, but, um, the hand sanitizer we can get for free. I talked to the Tots Parks volunteers about building the station, um, so I can work with them on that.
Okay, Heidi.
Go ahead.
Which, just so that we can, there are so many people that are. On the top row committee and pseudo involved in the talk committee. So who specifically have you talked to about making that?
Andrea, Andrea Connor.
Okay.
Yeah, so she and I have been in communication about, about building that. And the hand sanitizer would be free. So the main expense would be the wipes. Um, and that was something, uh, that. I saw, the place that I sourced it from, it was twenty five dollars for rolled eight hundred. But, um, I did mean to check in the shell to see if there's other. You know, res- resources, other avenues through which to get the wipes supplied. Um, so I will touch base with her about that.
I think, I think Anne would be, uh, Anne's the person who orders all the stuff for the village in terms of paper goods and that kind of stuff. So.
Okay.
She has accounts at a couple of different places.
Okay, also, some of that stuff is, some of the paper supplies, et cetera, are bought through procurement with the county, right? The, the bulk purchases?
I think, I don't, but I'm not sure. That's, that's an end question.
I think some of the paper products are bought through shared services.
Okay, so I will, I'll recap to Anne.
So, some of the paper products are charged accounting wise to shared services.
Right, and then we can also discount, right?
Not necessarily that they're purchased through the county.
Got it. We got a cheaper price buying through them, right? Got it.
I thought she got most of the stuff through.
Staples or, um.
Home Depot or something like that.
The other truck that I wish she going around, I can never remember.
Ranger or whatever. Sorry.
Anyway.
Something.
Okay, so some logistics things until we know the size and shape. Of the sanitizer or the wipes, I don't think anything can be built to put them on. Uh, because it seems to me that they would have to be placed so that nobody could like remove them. You know, they would need to be in that section of the tot park that we're going to leave open. So, I mean. I'll. I mean, I think that, I'm just thinking logistic wise, how long that's going to take to happen to open the tot park. When I drove by today. All of the toys that we put, that we're going to keep, that we put in the sandbox are now all over the tot park. So obviously, people are in the tot park.
Yeah.
Um. So I, I think that the best thing to do is be expeditious as possible. With some of that and give ourselves a timeline to get things done. So that we can feel like we're more in control and it's safer.
So, um, Ruth Ann, the, the, um, state hand sanitizers are standard size. So that's easy. I, I have one at the bookstore I can measure. And so I think that's something, and if I touch base with Anne this week, I'm thinking that at least getting the measurements is something we can do this week. And I can touch base with Andrea about how long we think it'll, it'll be to construct it.
Okay, yeah.
One other thing, uh, when I walked past there today, there was a pile of brush. Not near the, um, sandbox, but where the, um, major swings and, and teeter totters and whatnot are. I'm gonna say it's one to two foot high of brush, probably four foot long. And there are still a pile of, piles of leaves inside the fences.
So I'm not, I'm not sure what brushes by the swings. There was a lot of big weeds that had to get pulled. So I don't know what that is. If, if we're going forward, we have a, uh, the Girl Scouts. As you know, before, I mentioned this before and they've come before about cleaning up and the Girl Scouts are planning on going this Thursday. To do some more cleanup as part of their troop work. So we will probably get rid of some more brush and some more leaves. They're going to be wiping down all the, they're going to be cleaning up all the toys. They're going to be wiping down all of the, um. Equipment. You know, as part of their community service project. So we'll see how much more stuff we have to get out. The tot park committee still has work that they need to do. As far as, uh, rototilling the sand and replenishing the wood chips. But whether or not that has to happen before we open the playground up in the tot spark. I don't know if that is necessary. I think it's mostly the safety things. That we might want.
In the past, the, the park has been opened in advance of the chips going down. And the day that the chips were delivered and spread by volunteers, the park was closed for the day while we did it, did the work.
Well, you tried to close the park for the day.
I mean, we did. There were lots of adults running around with tools, so.
I know.
So, yeah, a couple of comments. The, uh, the, um, regulations say sixty people. I think that needs to be sixty adults. Sixty adults and children.
Yes.
I can interpret that as just adults.
Yeah. Sorry, I, I, I revised it to say capacity includes adults and children both.
Great, great. That's good. Uh, second is. There's supposed to be, uh, a sign in book. I'm not sure where that's going to go.
We, we actually took that out, Marie. If you, we took the sign in book out. Okay. It's not a reasonable thing to be able to expect people to sign in and sign out and have a waitlist and keep people outside. And, you know, we're gonna just have to trust people's judgment that they want to keep themselves and their children safe.
Okay.
Heidi can speak to that too. Heidi, would you, I think we all agreed on that, correct?
Yeah, I, well, uh, it was, uh, I think tweets brought it up and other members of the recreation committee, um, they just felt like it wasn't reasonable and. Um, I mean, it, that it wasn't realistic, whether or not it's reasonable. It wasn't realistic. Um, and that, uh, parents can be counted on, especially, you know. With just how aware people are now versus last year, that, that parents can be counted on to, uh, make the decisions. You know, and, and keep, and if you're, you know, if you're not comfortable with the capacity, you can always leave. But that generally, parents are, you know, have the best interests of their kids in mind and, and we can sort of do it on an honor roll. On our system.
And, and Marie, the capacity is fifty people.
Thank you. My mistake.
But now I just want to make it fifty adults and children as Heidi has said, that's what's on her new signage, I, um, suggestion.
Okay.
Just a question, um, in the, to add to the park. It says it's approximately two hundred dollars to purchase in a store both the hand sanitizer and wipe station, wipe station. And then it says that the volunteers will build it. Is it two hundred in addition to be building or is that the cost of the materials or is it free and not two hundred dollars?
Um, so that was accounting for the, some materials costs, um, and also wipes and restocking the wipes was, we thought. Was that, um, that kind of, that puts us in a good place for the next, um, budgeting for the next six months. I know we may need to look ahead further than that, but thinking that, um, you know, when the park is in its highest use is going to be this, uh, you know, spring, summer, fall. That that'll, that, um. Budgeting for the wipes cost will keep us through then. The hand sanitizer should continue to be free as long as the state keeps it free. Um, and the materials are minimal. If you look, it's hard to see on the black and white sheet, but, um, there is an example one there where it is just, it's very, it's very minimal. Just wood station. There's a slot and a place for a sign. Um, and so that, that is. Okay.
And I recommend that we shoot for either the weekend of the tenth or seventeenth to open, giving people time to put things in place. Or do you think that's enough time or too soon?
Um, I think.
Three weeks.
I think the tenth, I think that's enough time. I can, I can talk to Andrea this week and if it seems like, um, something can't be built that quickly, I can let you know, but. Just given the simplicity of what we're looking to do, I think it should be doable.
I'm good.
The tenth?
We could attempt or if it doesn't work on the following week.
I think choosing an earlier date and, and pushing to get it done will be better if we have, if people are already jumping the fence to get in the park, we should make sure there are. Um, that these measures are in place while the weather is good.
Is it going to be closed at any time or is it just going to be totally open? I know it's only going to be open on one side. Are we going to close it in the evenings or is it just going to stay open?
It's already closed at dusk, right?
Yeah.
No, it, it doesn't get closed at dusk now.
But don't village parks close at dusk?
It, that could be the statement, but the gates remain open.
Well, of course, I mean, anybody could.
I was talking about, I was talking about gate door. Okay.
The gates were never locked.
Right, okay.
Pandemic, the gates were never locked.
Don't have too many toddlers scrambling to get in at night.
Well, it's, it's the older ones that I'm, I'm wary about.
I mean, I can step over the fence. Almost I can step over the fence.
Must be really low.
Because boy, does Marie like to swing.
I think one thing we should really keep an eye on the statistics and data that's coming from Poughkeepsie County. Because we were very high level just a week ago. I think we're down a little bit. But if you look at the graph from this last dashboard, we're up higher than we were at the same time last year. If you have any, you know, if you look at that and feel it's reliable, I, I think we should really keep an eye on that.
I mean, that if, if it, um, if it gets too high, we can, we can consider closing again. But I think, yeah, given that people are already trying to use it. Uh, if we can regulate it, it's the way to go.
Agree.
Sounds good.
Okay, so just. Just so that I'm clear about who's doing what, so I can, then Heidi will, we, we work with Andrea about the sanitation sense center. Heidi will work with Anne about ordering the, um. Items needed to order. Okay, um. And then we can post that it's opened if it's finished by the tenth.
Who's, who's going to contact the county to get the, um?
Sorry, my internet keeps cutting in and out. I keep missing things.
We just said you were going to do everything, no problem.
That's fine. I'm happy to, to contact the county or the state as it may be for the sanitizer. Um, anything else?
Now that you said you were working with Andrea for the, wherever it's going to be put on and with Gray for the signage.
Yes.
And so, um. Then as soon as we have, we're shooting for the tenth, if not the seventeenth. So that's good. So hopefully by then, at least the maji- majority of stuff will be cleaned up and done.
Check with, check with, um, Jeff. I don't know if he has an account with Gray. He may, um, so it may just work through that.
Yeah. So, um, I just have.
It will needs to be, be based on that the, the park is clean, like of all debris. Uh, and that this, everything, the signage is in place. Sanitizers are, have been purchased, they're in place and the stands or dispensers, whatever are in place so that it can be open.
Okay, I, I just need one clarification, Heidi. On your, on your plan, you have an additional trash container being inside the park?
Yes, I'm, um, I wanted, I was curious what the rest of the trustees thought about that. I wasn't sure if that's feasible for Bugsy. And so I wanted to see what everyone else thought. Because I think if we have wipes, uh, we're going to want somewhere to throw them and we're going to want to make it easy for people not to, um, to just get rid of them.
Is there any kind of trash container in there now?
Yes, sorry, yes, there is at the, at the, at the entrance of the fence from Halloween Street. There's a trash container there. Which in the summertime, just attracts forms of yellow jackets. Because people throw food and trash in there. My recommendation would be not to put a garbage container. Inside the park for that purpose. But I understand you want someplace convenient for people to throw wipes, but they're going to throw food in there as well. And that's just going to attract, um, yellow jackets, uh, all sorts of stinging insects. And, and that's really, you, you don't want that nearby the kids. So.
I, I agree. I agree, Marie. I agree. And I really, um, the highway department drives by and empties that, you know, when they're doing the trash down at the corner by the fence. Diapers end up in there.
Oh, God, yes.
If we have something inside.
You don't want that.
Tot park. You know, I mean.
You don't want that. No.
It's gonna lead to.
It's not a Bugsy issue. It's a, a safety for the kids in the park issue.
Both, yep.
I'm wondering if we could have something smaller than, um. I just, so what, what do you suggest? Do we think that people will hold on to their wipes and then, you know, leave the park and go dump them?
What I would suggest is some, something closer to the bulletin board outside of the park.
Yeah, right outside.
Sometimes you see little, little things that are hung on to the fence. They're sort of, um. Mesh type of a metal mesh thing that you can hang that are smaller.
What if you made a sign that said wipes only here?
Yeah.
We know that we won't, people won't necessarily follow that, but if you could encourage it, maybe.
So maybe it's something of a smaller size then so that you don't feel like you can.
And then somebody has to just grab the, if it's got a liner, a plastic liner, just grab it.
So I, I think we agreed that the, it shouldn't go in the park itself.
Alright, yeah. Okay, um, can I have another, just a two minutes of your time?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The tot park committee. Is a nonprofit organization. We have Andrea and I, three years ago drafted and like an agreement about what the tot park committee was responsible for, what the village was responsible for. And who was the contact person? It's getting to be a little bit challenged because there are interested parents that get involved and they do some stuff or whatever. But, um, I'm working with Andrea again to find out who are the names on the, um, nonprofit organization. So we have, who are the contact people for the tot park committee? So hopefully by the next meeting that you have, workshop meeting, I will have for you the names of the people who are official. And, uh, a draft of an agreement that what the tot park committee is responsible and taking care of the tot park. And what the, um, recreation commission is responsible for and what the village is responsible for.
Great.
Mainly the highway department.
Great. Ruth Ann, um, on the, um. Question of opening date, uh, should there be consideration for an announcement in the papers? As to what that the top part is reopening on a particular day. Once you have some of the, the, I'm sorry, I said Ruth Ann, Ruth Ann, Heidi. Should there be an announcement in the papers as well as on the village website and the Facebook page that the tot park will reopen on a particular date?
Well, the top part, yes, I agree. And the top park has their own Facebook page. Um, so yeah, we can put it on Phillips Town Locals, we can put it on Cold Spring, we can put it in the Highland Current and the PCNR. I, I think that's really good. And this, you know.
Celebratory too, and it's.
Yes. As long as we have a, as long as we have a definite date.
Yeah, right. Yeah, once we have a date that we know that the things are ready to go, I think that is a great idea.
Yeah, um, on the celebratory date, didn't the tot park have an annual event?
The, the.
The cleanup.
The cleanup.
Columbus did the Easter egg thing.
And the cleanup.
But we can't do the Easter egg thing.
Yeah, that's canceled. I understand that, yeah. But other than the cleanup, I don't know.
Yeah, uh, okay. I thought they had a party once a year or so.
And it, it periodic fundraisers, but not. Not an annual thing.
And the suggestion about the announcement or the advertising of the opening, that was from Michael Mill. So thank you, Michael. Michael.
Yep. Yep, definitely will happen.
Great.
So now that I've bugged you with one extra thing, I have one more extra thing. But what I have under my attention, and that is, as we were getting requests for use of the various places. And what the group's COVID plan is for using, um. The bandstand or Mayor's Park. I did, um, do a pavilion square footage. The pavilion square footage is eleven hundred square feet. Uh, the Presbyterian church will be using it for their services again this year and they've provided a detailed. COVID plan. But we're also working with both the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts for use for their, um, end of the year activities, the pine wood derby. The bridging ceremonies. So I was just wondering what the trustees felt. A COVID plan from these groups should include. Do you want me to draft something up or what I think it should include? Do you want me?
Sounds good to me.
I'm, I'm just wondering with, um. The, um. What do you call it? The pavilion. It's an outdoor space. So are we limited by the square footage of the space when it's all open on all sides and people can sort of spill over? Man, I know we've measured it, but, but how do we, how do we limit, uh, how many people can be in there when there could very well be spread out over it?
But if that's what they're planning. If when the, when the Boy Scouts are down there or the Girl Scouts are down there and they're planning that they're going to use the field as well as the pavilion. Then I think, you know, we're open to a lot more people. In talking with the Girl Scouts for using it for their bridging activity, they would set up the bridging activity under the pavilion. And have the various troops waiting on the outskirts outside of the pavilion until it was their turn to come in. So we do, we would be using, they would be using much larger area than just underneath the pavilion. But I, I think we just have to clear it up and have one thing for everybody or it's going to get kind of like, who's doing what?
So Ruth Ann, there is, um, guidance from New York State on reopening for outdoor. Our activities. Have you seen that?
Yeah, you said, yeah.
Um, it's not a direct correlation, but it provides guidance for outdoor events and that may be useful. I, um, I think Jen, Jen's work sent it in. Thinking about, um, dockside. I'll, I'll, if, I'll forward it to you so you have it.
Say this again?
It's a, it's an, it's a New York State Department of Health guidance for outdoor activities. For reopening outdoor activities. So I'll send, I'll send you that.
Is that the one you sent already? It says beginning April second?
Nope.
Well, this is something new.
More detailed, yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, that would be very helpful. So we're moving, I know that we talked in the past, but we're moving forward of trying to get the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts to be using Mayor's Park. For some of their activities.
I think to consider is one, um, rain or rain dates. If they're do, having a ceremony, then people aren't.
Yes.
Let's stand outside and that'll mean everybody will be pushed inside. So we, I think we should get a rain date or be.
Yes.
At least clear on what happens if it's rain. I think there should, uh, we should still have. I think there should, uh, we should still, uh, have masks should be mandatory. Um, and, and six foot separation until we hear differently.
Yeah, we have heard differently this week. The, the guidance is now three feet, that schools-
That's for schools, that's not for other-
Does that apply beyond school?
I, I've only heard that for schools.
Okay.
And I haven't, I haven't paid attention, but-
We need to confirm that then, because I think the CDC has dropped it to three feet.
I mean, if it's three feet, is, is there really any sense of having a distance?
I know, I know, exactly.
Yeah, you know.
But three feet and having kids sit at desks is very different than three feet, but anyway. Um, the Girl Scout, um, Dave, the Girl Scout have done that. The Girl Scouts have given us two days in June, a Saturday and a Sunday, so they, they could have a rain date. The Boy Scouts, uh, not looking at a rain date, they're looking at a Sunday, the thirteenth. The Girl Scouts would have the morning, the Boy Scouts would have the afternoon. Um, but they have some conflict with that Saturday, so I guess they'll be out in the rain, but he said that they do that anyway.
Do, do we have numbers or, uh?
No, I haven't gotten that far yet with them.
Okay.
But I will.
I think that'll help you.
A consideration, a consideration is parking. Um-
Yes.
That would be a prime hiking day. And the hikers get there at, at eight o'clock in the morning, so maybe we need to rope off the entire Mayor's Park diagonal parking.
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding from Dave, Mayor Dave, that for the Presbyterian Church, that happens for their services. It's why the girls are going to plan on having theirs in the morning. Because it can get roped off in the morning, you know, and when they're using it, and then if the boys come in that afternoon, you know, we'll just have to see what we can do to facilitate both of them.
Yeah, we set up the cones and, and that works, you know, it says no parking and then whoever's using it knows they have permission, kind of moves the cones and parks in there.
Yeah, then the girls can move them back so then the boys can-
Exactly.
But it's just going to be great that they're going to be able to have these events, which they couldn't have last year. Because, um, you know, the parameters just didn't allow it, so it'll be good for the kids to have this happen.
What are the dates again, Ruth Ann?
June. June 12th and 13th.
Okay, and the 13th is rain. For, that's for the girls, and, and what about for the boys?
The boys right now are just ta- talking about the 13th. They're going to do it rain or shine.
Okay.
Not to imply that the Boy Scouts are tougher, just to be clear.
Would never say that.
Nope.
They probably get a badge for it.
Range badge.
Range meeting badge.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ruth Ann, and I'm, I'm glad if we can get a, I, I think the tot park, if they could get a board together, that'd be great, and so that we know who, who the point person is there.
I, I agree, I, I absolutely agree. I mean, I usually deal with Andrea because that's who holds the purse strings.
She's kind of the default.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Okay, well, I thank you all for your time and letting me add on those few things and have an enjoyable evening.
Thanks, Ruth Ann, thanks for taking your time. Heidi, thank you too for the tot park, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
It's a-
Bye-bye.
Super achievement for the community. Good night.
Hey, um, we can't escape police, every, every night we need to discuss them. So, uh, Reese Aronow, um, is recently resigned, he's taking a position with the, uh, Duchess County Sheriff, Sheriff's Department. Um, Reese, I think his first job was with us, or he might have had another part-time, but, uh, you know, we're, we're a stepping stone, so young guy and, uh, helped him get to the next step for a, a full-time job. Unfortunately, that leaves Larry another person short. So, uh, I'll be talking to Larry, hopefully tomorrow on, uh, hiring and, and advertising for that. But, uh, I will, uh, make a motion to accept the resignation of Reese Aronow from the, uh, Police Department.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just gratitude, gratitude for a service.
Reese, nice having you.
We'll miss him.
And good luck, Reese, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, shifting gears to the Arbor Day Foundation, uh, again, uh, I'll, I'll read the, uh, the, uh, announcement. It's on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I write to congratulate the Village of Cold Spring on earning recognition as a 2020 Tree City USA. Uh, residents of Village of Cold Spring should be proud to live in a community that makes, uh, the planting and care of trees a priority. Village of Cold Spring is one of more than thirty-six hundred Tree City USA communities with a combined population of a hundred and fifty-five million. The Tree City USA program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in partnership with the US Forest Service and the National Association of State Foresters. If ever there was a time for trees, uh, now is that time. Communities worldwide are facing issues with air quality, water resources, personal health and wellbeing, and energy use. Uh, Village of Cold Spring is stepping up to do its part. As a result of your commitment to effective urban forest management, you're helping to provide a solution to these challenges. We hope you're excited to share this accomplishment. Uh, enclosed in this packet is a press release for your convenience as you prepare to contact local media and public and the public. State Forests, Foresters, uh, coordinate the presentation of the Tree City USA recognition materials. We will forward information about your awards to your State Foresters Office to facilitate presentation. It would be especially appropriate to make the Tree City USA award a part of your community's Arbor Day ceremony. Again, we celebrate your commitment to the people and trees of Village of Cold Spring, and thank you for helping create a healthier planet for us all. Best regards, Dan Lambay. Uh, the president. So, um, and that follows with, uh, well, I should have read the release and not, not the letter. Uh, I guess, should I read the letter or do you think we're good?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Get the idea, great work.
Right, congratulate the-
Tree Advisory Board.
Tree Advisory Board.
Yeah.
Do we, I, I know there's a date set for Arbor Day, and I believe it's, um, sometime mid-Ju- mid-April, uh, but I don't remember the exact date. I don't remember the exact date, but I'm going to contact Jen, so.
Great.
So we can post that too.
Okay, so moving along, so thank you, Jen.
Yes, congratulations.
A lot of work, always, uh, on Jen's part and the boards, especially Jen, always hustling and writing grants and, and getting, getting, uh, information to people, so thank you so much. Congratulations.
Yep.
We are proud and excited.
We are. I think, I think we get signs, I think we get signs to post around, I've seen them in others, in other places that are tree cities.
There's one up, when you drive into Cold Spring at the end of Fair Street, they've, she's already got, of course, she already has it up. And it also opens us to grant opportunities, which is exciting.
That I know too. Good to go.
Hey, so, uh, next is minutes, I believe there's one that we want to have tabled, uh, I guess it's the first one.
Three, two, yeah.
Two, two minutes, March, two, two of them, March 2nd and March 9th.
Okay.
March 9th isn't on the agenda at all right now, but the second is, so that, that one, yeah, needs to be tabled.
So we're tabling, uh, March 2nd, and we'll go to approve the minutes of March 4th. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve those minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last one we have here is minutes from, uh, March 11th, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, nicely done.
Approval of bills.
What's that?
Approval of bills.
Okay, approval of bills.
So I make a motion to approve batch number five nine four five in the amount of forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and seven cents.
Second. Oh, Heidi.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and I missed one, also, the, uh, set a date for the public hearing for the budget. Comments or discussion on that?
April 13th is what we're talking about.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I will not be here that day, but you-
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, set the, uh, public hearing date for our budget, uh, for, uh, April 13th, 2021.
Second.
Wait, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Okay, I think I got them all now, I had to backtrack a bit, sorry about that. Um, do we have, uh, comments from, anything else from the board before we ask, see if there's any public comments?
Uh, I have a question for you. May I?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the ad went in the paper this week for the survey. Um, and was submitted to the, it went into the PCNR and is submitted to the current for publication on Friday. My proposal is to use the text of that ad to make the, uh, card that is dropped at doors, I just wanted to make sure everybody's cool with using the same text for the, uh, door hanger. Now, survey, okay.
I'm, I'm, I will put, I will put that ad up on the village Facebook page too.
Right on.
Um, just a question, um, I have culled through the, um, the listener from Mike, uh, from Jeff, and got rid of all the duplicates, and there's just over six hundred, is there any particular time you want me to release that? Is this, I mean, I can release it as soon as Thursday or Friday, just-
The PCNR goes online, the PCNR goes online tonight, so if we're ready to go, we should go.
The PCNR, the PCNR was online this afternoon.
This afternoon, and so-
And the current goes out, what, Thursday or Friday?
Friday, so I, I think, I mean, we had, we had as a, as a, a date, we were aiming for Wednesday anyway, so. Let's get it rolling.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, all right, as soon as I, today is what, Tuesday, tomorrow, Wednesday? Oh, I'll get them out like between Thursday and Friday, between Thursday and Saturday, let's put it that way, kind of break it up into small bunches.
If you receive, um, requests for Spanish language, that's ready to go too. We've got that done.
Right. And just, just so, um, nevermind. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, regarding, uh, the bathroom survey, uh, I talked to Bugsy about, well, first of all, there's misinformation out there, and, and I'd like to try to clear that up, although I'm really bad at doing that, no matter how much I say it, but, uh, the fact is that the, the village was not denying people from using the bathroom, we, we opened the bathroom, we have to keep, first of all, we have to winterize the bathrooms. We don't keep them open all winter because they freeze and there's, there's, there's problems when they freeze and, and toilets break. So we winterize all of the bathrooms, we open them up every April, that has been, you know, that's business as usual, every year we do that. Um, and so it's not even April yet, that's one reason why they're not open. Second, last year, uh, you know, COVID threw a wrench into all the gears, and we didn't feel, as a board, um, especially last year when everyone hardly knew anything about what was going on, that it wouldn't be wise to open the, uh, bathroom, so. So we didn't, and we prolonged it, and then the chamber came to us with a plan, um, they would monitor and they would clean and wipe down or whatever, and so we, uh, worked with them on that, which, which was great, and I think worked out well. Um, so this year, um, we weren't even given a chance to open them, um, we're being accused of denying people rights and, and on and on and on. Um, which isn't true because the, the intention, I, I don't know if anyone else, you know, had thoughts on this, but we would have been talking about this had given the chance on when to open them, and that, you know, winter's over, hopefully things aren't going to freeze, we'd be opening them as usual. The highway department cleans them three times a week, um, they restock them, um, and that's all part of the things that it sounds like, you know, we don't do or don't care from some of, uh, positions, or one position I saw, or kind of the, uh, insinuations of, uh, what, what's been said, or. So, um, I talked to Bugsy this week, um, he's fine with doing quick cleans, like sweeping and like wiping down the toilet and sinks in the bathrooms. It would probably only take like fifteen minutes or something a day on the days that we don't do it now. Um, I pressed them on it and said, I do not want to, you know, put a burden on you, or if this doesn't work, you know, you have to tell me right now. He said, it shouldn't be a problem at all. So with that, um, they're fine with cleaning them every day, you know, um, they're not going to come in on Saturdays. If we have someone come in Saturdays, we're double timing it, and, uh, we're cleaning them Friday nights and Sunday mornings and then Mondays. So, uh, along with those three days, they can come in, um, if they need to be restocked, we can restock them, I'm sure that's not going to be a problem during the week. Um, I will, I didn't ask him about that though. So I, I don't, I don't feel the need to, to have a survey now, or, um, I, and I don't think after thinking about it that we can just keep having surveys whenever, you know, uh, an issue comes up. I, we're elected for a reason, um, I feel comfortable with having Bugsy do that and the number of days that are being cleaned. If the chamber or anyone else would like to assist us in keeping them cleaner, or raise the standard on the cleanliness, um, then, you know, I think that would be great to have a proposal from them to do so and to help us with that. Um, so, I don't know how anyone else feels about our highway, you know, doing that, Bugsy's fine with it. So I, I would be fine with letting them, you know, having one of the guys come in, do a quick clean in the mornings, make sure everything's kind of tidy, and, uh, and then go from there.
So can you clarify, you're saying seven days a week, or they'd clean it in the morning?
Right now, they clean it at Friday afternoons.
Right.
So that it's ready for Saturday, they do not clean it on Saturday, and I'm not suggesting they do clean it on Saturday. They clean it Sunday morning, um, and they, and then they clean it Monday morning. So we would add Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning, Thursday morning, and Friday morning, or I guess it would be Friday morning.
Okay, so there, so the, the only day there would be no cleaning at all still would be Saturday?
Right, they'd be cleaning Friday night, so basically it would be Saturday morning, you know, I don't think people are going to use it too much after when those guys leave or work on Friday.
So they clean it Friday night and then it's locked after that, or it's just before the end of the shift?
Um, I'm not sure what time they get there, I'm sure it's open for a few hours or until when the, the police close it.
Okay.
I, um, just, just, you know, I mean, Heidi had shared with me the list that, um, Eliza came up with for their cleaning companies, uh, there were three companies on it, I called each of them. I got, uh, a, a proposal from one right away. The second one took about a week and the third one I'm still waiting for, they're roughly in, in the numbers, I mean, I asked for specifically what, what Eliza had asked for. Um, so we do have the companies, the people I spoke to were very nice, so if we need to fall back on that, or, or if the chamber wants to, uh, jump in and, and add that, uh, as additional, um, I've got those numbers and I have written proposals, as soon as I get to the third one, I was going to share. Um, but it just hasn't come through, although I was promised, um, two or three times that, you know, it'll come tonight, it'll come tonight, but it hasn't quite come yet.
I think it's also worth noting for the benefit of the, the public who are on the call, that we did, um, guidance from the Putnam County Health Department for the updated, um, guidance from New York State um, on the maintenance and, um, upkeep of public bathrooms under current orders. Um, so we have more, we have newer guidance, which is less, um, the, the, the level of sanitization, sanitization, if that's a word, um, is different than it was over the summer, and so, um, the, the, the amount of, of labor required adjusts, and that may, that may adjust the numbers that, that you come back with too, Fran, based on that, so. It, we're, we're just in a better place than we were last March in terms of guidance and, um, capacity.
It sounds like, it sounds like we're good at this point with just going with what Bugsy can do.
I think it actually says, if you really want to get to the, the message that was sent, it was like, it's more important to have bathrooms open than worry about COVID.
Yes, exactly, exactly, and that was really striking.
Yeah, I feel, I, I think it would be worth, um, you know, for, once Fran has all the information, I think it would be worth us hearing and, and considering, she has done the-
I, I will share them as, as soon as I get the last one, and, um, I, I have called them a couple of times and I've emailed them.
Um, and I, I still would say that, you know, if it's something that residents want, um, it's always worth considering. My concern is that, um, with the heavy use we see on Saturdays, um, how dirty it gets, it won't be usable. I don't know if it's something we could, uh, add to the highway, um, department budget, you know, I don't, and I don't think we have to go private by any means, but, um, but I do think it, it's worth considering, uh, you know, what makes the bathroom usable for people, and um, I really, I really appreciate that other days are being, um, added on, I think, um, that's, that's a great service. Um, and I would like us to, to think about Saturday.
So Dave, what, when do they come in? They come in to do the garbage on Sunday morning?
Sundays, yes.
How early do they come in Sunday morning?
Come in early. I mean, not like seven o'clock or something, but they're in at eight or something, I think, or nine.
I thought it was closer to seven.
Yeah. Before the tourists.
Yeah.
Maybe if there, maybe there could be, maybe the, the Chamber might be willing to help with a check-in on Saturday afternoon to make sure supplies are in stock and
Yeah, I don't, from what I've heard, I don't know that, that supplies are the issue. It's, I think it was Archie who brought it up, that it just gets dirty fast, because there's so many people.
People.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe if the, if the protocols are modified, maybe the, the, the cost of cleaning on the, on the Saturday would be less, and maybe that's something the Chamber would be willing to, to pitch in for this season.
Certainly worth asking them.
Seems worth, worth asking, yeah.
Okay, so Fran, when you get the numbers, whatever you come, we can discuss and vote on it and, and see where you wanna go with that.
Okay, will do.
But I, I kind of, that's where we're at. I, I definitely wouldn't ask our Highway to do any more than I'm asking you now. Like, I didn't wanna ask that much. So if we're gonna discuss this, if we're gonna consider putting more time or money into it, it wouldn't come from, in my opinion, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't vote for having a Highway do any for future or further additional cleanings on.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Tomorrow, there's a, a test siren at 10:30. So don't pack up your stuff and screech out of town. Indian Point will have a four-minute test siren.
Oh, and also, Dave, the, there is a pod, a vaccination pod happening at the Phillips Town Rec Center on Thursday. There are still appointments available. People 50 and older are now available. So John, my husband's getting a, getting vaccinated on Thursday. That's one, one half of the adult household. But there, the, the, as of a couple of hour, hours ago, the appointments were plentiful. So if you're 50 and up, you can get vaccinated at Phillips Town. The link is on, I think it's on
It's on the Village Facebook page.
Village Face, Village Facebook page.
Great. Good to know. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for contacting. It was good to have that information about the updates on the, on where we are with cleaning.
Yeah. Shout, shout out to Sean Rogan at the Health Department.
Right. Okay, so do we have a public comment? Michael? We have a hand up.
Uh, two quick things. One, I think we've lost Ruth Ann, but as I understand it, groups using Billy's Parks will be required to submit a COVID plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, Dave, could you provide an update for 2931 Rock Street? We were copied on the letter that you received from residents in the area concerned that the, the owner there had brought in some heavy equipment recently, and looked like he was going to start up doing work.
Yeah, I think it was Monday, was like a ugly Monday, one of those ugly Mondays, where, yeah, I guess the owner brought in some heavy equipment and also fencing, maybe some other, other materials. And as you can imagine, the phones started ringing off the hook at, at the village office. So Jeff contacted, well, he contacted me, contacted Officer Charge Burke, contacted our building inspector, and also our attorney. Unfortunately, our attorney was in the middle of a move, so it took a little while to get to him. But Larry Burke went over immediately, told him he had to stop, and the owner was, tried to explain to him that our, our attorneys had talked, and it was okay to proceed with the work, which wasn't the case. So finally, you know, to, to give you an answer on, on this, he stopped working. I believe the heavy equipment is out of there now. Our, our attorney's contacted his, and they won't be continuing any work unless, of course, they decide they, I don't know. This just kind of came out of the blue. It was made clear that we are not approving that they move ahead, and an additional stop work order was placed on, on the, on the job site. So as of now, you know, everything's calmed down, and we'll, you know, our attorney is, you know, working on the, on the litigation. So that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? And, and please give your name and stuff, so, you know, if people don't see you or whatever, they know who you are and, and where you live, please. Anyone else, Michael?
I don't see any hands up on Zoom or on the video.
Okay. That said, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you.
Night.